I'll call this meeting to order. I'm going to ask Counselor Swagstr for the opening, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. We've been hearing a lot in the news about how we vote here in Canada. This is something that's been occupying some attention. It goes back to June 17th, 2015. Prime Minister Justin Trudeau, then simply the Liberal Party leader, had pledged that the 2015 federal election would be the last election to take place under the current first past the post electoral system. Last week Trudeau broke that promise and announced that electoral reform would not happen under his government. For breaking this campaign promise Trudeau deserves both praise and condemnation. He deserves praise because it was the right decision. His earlier pledge to scrap the first past the post electoral system never made sense, and Trudeau knew it. First past the post has served Canada well for the last 150 years and enables the formation of stable majority governments. If we replace the current system with proportional representation, we could expect unstable minority governments as far as the eye can see. While first past the post occasionally results in lopsided majorities, it also gives our democracy some much-needed stability. The string of minority governments we had from 2004 to 2011, a total of four elections in seven years, was a grim reminder of what we could expect under a new electoral system. Minority governments are okay in moderation, but it is not in our country's best interest to permanently operate with that kind of instability. There are many other positive things about the first past the post system. It is relatively simple to administer. It provides its constituency with its own Member of Parliament, and it encourages political parties to develop support across the country and not just in vote-rich urban centers. For these and many other reasons Trudeau did the right thing when he reneged on his campaign promise. That being said, the opposition parties are also absolutely right to condemn Trudeau for this decision. Not only did he shamelessly break a campaign promise that he publicly repeated hundreds of times, it is transparently obvious that he never took this commitment seriously in the first place. When Trudeau first made this pledge, he was the leader of the third-place party in the House of Commons. The Liberals were behind in the polls and it looked like they were going to split the centre-left vote with the NDP. Trudeau needed to make a bold promise that would energize progressive voters and encourage them to vote for his party in the 2015 election. The promise to abolish first past the post fit the bill. However Trudeau's enthusiasm for electoral reform evaporated when he unexpectedly won a majority government under the very system he had recently promised to abolish. During a candid interview last October with Le Devoir, Trudeau openly acknowledged that electoral reform seemed a whole lot less urgent now that Canadians had a government they were happy with. Thus it should not come as much of a surprise that Trudeau did everything he could to sabotage the electoral reform process after he got elected. From appointing a rookie minister to steer the file to dragging his heels in the formation of an electoral reform committee to refusing to adopt that committee's recommendations, it became clear that the fix was in. Now all those progressives who voted for the Liberals in the last election feel betrayed, and so they should. The Liberals cynically promised to do something that the NDP and Green Party had advocated for years and then yanked the rug out from under them as soon as they were in a position to fulfill that promise. Trudeau confirmed that the only sacrosanct principle that his party holds is that of obtaining power. In 2015, promising electoral reform helped the Liberals to obtain power, and in 2017, scrapping electoral reform will help them to retain it. Prime Minister Justin Trudeau did the right thing for the wrong reason. Let us offer him both praise and condemnation. And let me just say in closing that I appreciate the electoral system that we have here in Canada. One of the things that I'll say, and this is, I will make strictly nonpartisan, we have one of the best electoral systems in the world. When you look at the stable democracy that we have and the fact that our system, it doesn't get hacked into. We have a system where we mark an X on that ballot. We know that the procedures in place ensure that those ballots are counted fairly and properly. We simply don't have the problems that so many other countries do. And I certainly hope that whatever future changes end up being made to the electoral system, that we don't move away from the best electoral system in the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Swagstr. It's always interesting to hear your perspective on political things. You have a very good way of bringing it across. I'm going to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Counselor Kerry Penner, second by Counselor Funk. Any changes? I understand. Mr. Workington?
Oh, yes. Just wanted to make counsel aware that the public hearing scheduled for variance 2016-26 will be postponed until February the 21st.
Okay. So amend that to reflect that. And I guess we need to make a motion also to excuse Mayor Gerson. Would that be appropriate, to do that at this time?
That could be done as a separate motion.
Okay. Okay, then I'm going to call for the question. All in favor of adopting the agenda? All in favor? Let's carry it. Okay. Then I'm going to entertain a motion to excuse Mayor Gerson. Counselor Siemens? Nobody else? Counselor Penner? All in favor? Let's carry it. Okay. A motion for to adopt the minutes of the January 17th regular council meeting? Counselor Funk? Counselor Susan Penner? Any discussion? All in favor? Let's carry it. There's no business arising from the minutes. I'm seeing we don't have the public hearing. We're not at 7:40 yet, so we're going to go to council table at the back of the book. Have a motion for that, please. Counselor Funk? Counselor Siemens, second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Let's carry it. Bylaw 2067, Mr. Workington, could you introduce that, please?
Yes, the material for that particular agenda item starts on page 30, council's information package. This pertains to bylaw 2067 for property located on Stonebridge Crossing. It was an application for rezoning. The public hearing and second reading was provided by council on July 19th, 2016, which prompted the file to be referred to the Manitoba Municipal Board for further public hearing. In fact, the lone objector that continued to object after second reading did not appear at the municipal board hearing. And as a result, the purpose of the hearing was no longer valid. Therefore, the hearing was canceled. As a result, council may now proceed to give this bylaw a third reading.
Thank you, Mr. Workington. So could I have a motion for a third reading on? Counselor Siemens?
Question to administration.
Okay, Counselor Siemens.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. If we approve third reading here, does this come back to council in any form?
Based on the proposed development and the rezoning to the residential medium density, there is no further formal involvement by city council. However, any permits or application to develop would then go through the normal review process by administration.
And not do back to city council?
Correct.
Just as further explanation, I think, starting when we were first elected council in 2006, one of the changes we've made on this type of zoning application is the fact that we don't approve it generally until we see what is being built or what the intentions are. And this would, by approving this, we don't necessarily see what the intentions are going to be for this piece of property. Because changing zoning doesn't give us, as a council, an indication what's going to be built.
Specifically, those particular plans are not available. That is correct. However, there are specific parameters within the city zoning bylaw as to what are permitted uses within RMD. There also with properties such as this that get rezoned from a lower density to a higher density, there has previously been the adoption of the city's infill policy. That is an administrative review that is done at time of permit. Whereas if there are residential properties that are impacted according to the criteria set in that policy, that is reviewed and the development is expected to comply with those criteria at time of permit application.
Thank you. Do you have a question? Move to approve? Counselor Susan Penner, second.
I'll second.
Counselor Swagstr? Would you like to speak to that? Counselor Penner?
Yes, I'm happy that we can change the zoning. The area already has numerous seniors' housing options. It's a good fit. I don't think it's a traditional infill housing, as it were, because there's only the backyards there of Albert Street where there's residences. So I think it's been very successful, these developments, so far, to give our seniors affordable options to live. So I'm happy that this will be another option going forward.
Mr. Swagstr?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I will support third reading as well. This is an application that we obviously heard the proposal from the applicant, and they had explained quite clearly that they would like to have this zone to medium density to accommodate future seniors' housing. There was an objection raised at the time. It should be noted that we have the municipal board ruling here and that the objector actually didn't show up at the municipal board hearing, and they actually commented on that in terms of that that has caused a significant delay and no expense and such. And so it's unfortunate when that sort of thing happens, when you have one or two objections and then you don't even have the hearing go ahead because the objections are withdrawn and they're not notified until the day of the hearing. So that's unfortunate. Nevertheless, that's the system as it is now, and I think it's appropriate that we go ahead with third reading and allow the rezoning.
Thank you, Counselor Swagstr. Any other comments? Counsel, I think that this, there's a lot of this type of housing in that area. And so I think it's very, very fitting that we approve this and move ahead with more housing because there's always a big demand for that kind of housing in the area. So I'll call for the question. All those in favor of third reading? Let's carry it. Okay, we're going to go back to the delegation now. And so I'm going to ask Curtis Bueckert, if you could take the podium, state your name and address. And you, what, five, 10 minutes?
Sure.
Yep, great, thanks.
Thank you. My name is Kurt Bueckert, or Curtis Bueckert, if you're my mother. I live at 159 Home Street. Thank you for allowing me to present to you this evening. I work as an environment officer here in the city of Steinbach for Manitoba Sustainable Development. My educational background is in land and water management and environmental management. Home Street North runs from Lowen Boulevard to Stonebridge Crescent and a little beyond. It is used by residents of Home Street and many other residents as an area. In the area is a shortcut to Stonebridge Crescent after the changes were made to Stonebridge Crescent and Highway 12 a few years ago. The drain crosses the Home Street about a third of the way down from Lowen Boulevard. This drain is designed to flow over the street rather than under the street, which is normal practice. Having this water flow over the street has caused many problems for both vehicle traffic and pedestrian traffic. Water backs up and vehicles and pedestrians must cross through the water. Numerous vehicles have lost parts in the dip of the road. Pedestrians must jump over water or walk through the water. Ice buildup makes it treacherous for pedestrians to walk. This ice builds up from Lowen Boulevard until approximately 50 meters beyond the swale going towards Stonebridge Crossing. As residents of Home Street are paying for a sidewalk through their taxes, yet we don't have a sidewalk, and we must walk on the streets. This ice buildup also makes it more difficult for vehicles to maintain their traction. Some vehicles have been, had to be assisted to make it up the slope due to the ice buildup. Water backs up after every rainfall event and can last for weeks at a time. I've spoken to many of the residents along Home Street in the area regarding this problem. We agree that this needs to be repaired and are submitting a petition today to have the Home Street swale repaired so that water flows under the road rather than on top of the road. There's been a great deal of discussion in our city regarding moving past the small-town way of thinking. Draining water over the road is not a normal way to do things in a cold wa, or a cold climate. It is small-town thinking, and it's a small-town way of thinking to cut costs. Steinbach, a city large enough to build a new performing arts center, must deal with drainage problems the way a city would. Thank you again for letting me present today.
If you want to just, there may be some questions. Is there anybody that has any questions of?
Sure, just pass it.
No questions? Okay. Anybody? Mr. Workington, have you got any response to that? Can you give us a little bit of history on?
Perhaps I could if there are questions of council, from council.
Okay. Yes.
Deputy Mayor, I have a question for administration. Has there been any, I know this has been an ongoing problem, so this has been on the radar, but has there been any time spent on looking at solutions for this?
Well, there has been previous correspondence with Mr. Bueckert and with one other homeowner on the street. That information was provided to council in the information package. And the challenges with the street are noted. On occasion, especially during winter thaws, as was recently experienced in January, there can be some challenges with water buildup, ice buildup as the drain is configured to drain over, or the water is configured to drain over the roadway. Based on the configuration and the recognition that there can be challenges at time, the city has directed its, or worked with operations department to provide that area with extra attention to try and keep the road as clear as is reasonably possible within the capabilities of the department and with other demands the department has to, has to deal with. And the attempts are to try and keep the roadway clear and as safe as possible.
Okay. I think Counselor Penner, did you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Is this an issue that is also something that happens in other areas of the city? Do we have any examples where other streets have drainage that runs over the road in a swale such as this?
There are a number of locations in Steinbach. I could say, first of all, generally, the majority of the city is designed on a curb-and-gutter surface style of drainage on all streets, not necessarily swales as pronounced as the particular one on Home Street. However, comparable examples that I can think of would be Fairmont Crescent, Barkman Avenue, Creekside Drive, Geese Breck Street, or a number of locations where there is the drainage swale configuration that would be fairly typical and comparable to what's presently on Home Street.
Thank you.
Counselor Swagstr?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So just to clarify through administration, in terms of that if, in terms of addressing this, is there, are there specific things? Is there, what would be involved in fixing it? As opposed to, you know, because right now we have, obviously, Public Works there to try to mitigate this. Is there something that would fix it? And if so, do we have any idea how much that would cost?
Well, if the suggestion of fixing it is to pursue the suggestion of Mr. Bueckert of putting in a culvert and putting the street over top, that option was reviewed in the mid-1990s when the most recent changes were completed to the configuration of that particular section of street. But as far as cost estimates, those have not been determined.
Just to follow up there. So in the mid-1990s, when this was looked at and this, the fixer, the change was considered, what was the reason that was not done? Was it cost, or was it, was it just, what were the reasons at that time?
From information that I do have available, cost was one consideration. The general findings at that time was with the proposed configuration of a culvert and roadway over top, at that time it was estimated the elevations would have to be increased by about one meter in order to accommodate that. That would result in some significant reconstruction of the roadway and grading changes both to the right-of-way and to the surrounding private properties.
Okay, Counselor Funk?
Those, one meter, that's very significant. But I'm reminded of a situation that was brought to us a few years back. It was also a drainage situation, and it was on East Main Street. And we had allocated a small amount of money, and, but no one was ever doing anything. And then we had a, I think, a staff member work as a liaison with the neighborhood. And it seemed to, I don't think it's perfect yet. I think it seems to be working better. I don't hear anything from it, you know, like I did on a regular basis before. I'm just wondering if, I'm not saying to allocate money. I'm just wondering if there is, can we have a staff member meet with the, or can we meet with the neighborhood and start working out some sort of solution? It might not be perfect, but we can maybe make it better than what it is.
I would suggest that was a somewhat different circumstance in that that particular example that you were referring to was entirely on private property. This is a public right-of-way that the city does have jurisdiction over.
So, Counselor Penner?
Yes, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I think in fairness to the neighborhood, it would be a good idea for city, for the city to explore different options, to look at this issue more comprehensively, and to actually know what it would cost to either alleviate the problem or to fix the problem so that we actually have some numbers to go by, and then we can make a decision on what we can do to help the neighborhood.
Are you going to make that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. There's a second. Counselor Funk? Okay, do you have any further comments to that, or?
No.
No? Counselor Funk, anything further?
I just would like to say, yeah, I think some information on that would be very good. It would give us a ballpark, an idea of what it could cost. And it's something we can take back to the neighborhood and say, this is what can be done, this is what it's going to cost. And so I support that.
Okay. Have that ready for study session?
Summer study session?
Summer study?
That's doable.
That's doable? Okay. Okay, any other further comments? Counselor Siemens?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I would agree with the motion. I think there's other drains in Steinbach this would affect as well, whatever decision we make here. But I think this is the worst that has this situation. And I think there should be more than, there should be two or three options that the city council can review and with appropriate dollars attached so we can do a good review. And I think there are a couple of options that might be doable. And I'll look forward to the report.
Okay. I'll call for the question. All those, do you have further?
Just closing?
Yeah, sorry.
Yes, I think when we have a situation like this where we have a neighborhood that brings us concerns and we've seen the issues over some time, we need to have information in order to go forward on this. So we need to have some options from our administration and then we can make a thoughtful decision on this.
Okay. Thank you much. I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Let's carry it. So we're going to get a report and study session, after study session you could probably contact. That would be sometime in middle of July, possibly, right? We should have some ideas as to, it'll come, it'll come back to council at that point.
No, thank you for meeting with me tonight. I just hope that nobody gets hurt walking on that ice because I think there would be a liability for the city of Steinbach should somebody be hurt. I just thought I'd mention that.
Thank you. Okay. To 9C lottery licenses on page 37, there's a motion there? Somebody want to move that? Counselor Funk? Counselor Kerry Penner? Any discussion? All in favor? Let's carry it. Okay, building permits on page 38. Somebody want to make a motion?
I will.
Counselor Siemens? Counselor Swagstr?
One comment.
One comment?
Deputy Mayor, the issue dates on page 38 need to be adjusted, okay? But it is good that we've got lots of like that. It's a good form. But it is good to see $3.8 million in building permits for January.
Okay, just for clarification, there's also one on page 39, so we'll address that one next, right? So, okay, so I'll call for the question. All in favor? Let's carry it. And then we'll go to building permits on, for January, on page 39. Have a motion for that, please. Counselor Swagstr? Counselor Kerry Penner? Any discussion? All in favor? Let's carry it. Okay, page 40. Supplemental taxes. And I guess that's, is that for information only? Mr. Workington?
No, the request from council is to approve the adjustments by resolution.
Okay. Could somebody move that? Counselor Swagstr? Counselor Susan Penner, second it? Any discussion? All in favor? Let's carry it. Okay, on page 57, Dutch Elm disease. Mr. Workington, can you just give us a little bit of a brief review of that Dutch Elm disease?
Yes, this is an annual funding agreement that the city of Steinbach enters into with the province of Manitoba should council wish to pursue the program again for 2017. This highlights the components of the Dutch Elm disease control program for the city of Steinbach, also highlighting the amount of grant funding that is available from the province for that purpose. There is a resolution that is requested of council that appears on page 57 of your information package.
Somebody move that? Counselor Siemens? Seconded by Counselor Kerry Penner? Any further discussion? Counselor Siemens?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. A question to administration. What is our annual budget for the Dutch Elm disease program?
In 2017, with the additional obligation for the city to now pay for all the costs of elm tree removals, I believe our estimated budget is about $35,000 for the program.
That number is substantially different than it was 10 years ago as more of it is being downloaded on the city. But I think this is still a good program for the city to be involved in. It does save a lot of our trees through the injection program that we also had for our elm trees in the last year. So the motion is to approve this resolution as it is.
Okay, further?
No further questions.
Call for the question. All those in favor? Let's carry it. Page 63. We have a motion regarding the Small Communities Transportation Fund grant. Mr. Workington, can you just give us a brief rundown on that?
Yes, this is a provincial grant program that is available to the city of Steinbach for purposes in this particular application to help fund the costs of the project that has been proposed for Clearwater Avenue for the installation of a sidewalk. The city would qualify for the grant funding amount of $50,000 to offset the project cost that's estimated at $185,000, requesting council resolution to approve.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion? Counselor Swagstr?
Make the motion.
Counselor Kerry Penner, second it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it makes sense to apply for the Small Communities Transportation Fund here. The, we would, it would be great to receive $50,000 toward or the estimate $185,000 that the, that the 500 meters that the, that the 500 meters of new sidewalk along Clearwater Avenue will, will cost, and so hopefully this application is successful.
Anything further?
Yes, Clearwater is a long avenue, and I think it's a very good idea to have a sidewalk on there for especially pedestrians that are going to and from school.
That's great. Okay, I'll call for the question. All in favor? That's carried. Any questions, counsel? None. Go to 11A, Minnetonka Heritage Village, the grant request. I think this is covered off in our core four, four organizations, correct? And so, this is not something that requires a motions for information only, correct? So, we'll take that as information. And 11B, page 89, Jacob Library Minutes, take that as information as well. And Saint Rat River Conservation District, page 89, I guess that's page 94, we'll take that as information as well. There is a, on 11D, a Canadian Municipal Network on Crime Prevention, and I guess the mayor had sent out a reminder to those that could make it, that they would make it a priority to go there, so if there's something that fits, I'd encourage you to take advantage of that. And there's no other business, so I entertain a motion to adjourn. Counsel Kerry Penner, seconded by Counsel Funk. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much.